Reporting in progress.
Good morning, everybody. It is Friday, January twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-four at ten. Ten AM, Harney County Court for a planned work session. And we're here today to talk about the budget process for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal years. And just maybe kind of set out some guidance, I guess, some understanding and whatnot, how we want to proceed this year. But Commissioner Shelman, I'm going to let you start off.
I had asked that we do this prior to our appointment of the Budget Officer, which I think it's just good, healthy dialogue for us to have. You know, especially as historically, we have appointed it to the the general, which wears many hats. And we are concerned of trying to put too much workload on one person. And so trying to just figure out how we can help you, what those dynamics look like as a Budget Officer. What what's required? I think getting us all up to speed as far as, you know, understanding what that role is and making sure that the public understands what that role is, what it does and what it doesn't do. I think would just be good, healthy conversation for all of us. And then, you know, other counties do do it differently. If if this county were to look at wanting to, you know, advertise that as as something available to the public to want to participate in. You know, I don't know if we're ready to go there yet, but into the future, we might. And so it's just one of those things, trying to understand the role of the Budget Officer, you know, and where we have a little time before we have to do that actual appointment. I thought it was good to just take a step back, have this work session, have some dialogue. You know, I'd like to hear from the Treasurer and and Budget Board members, you know, that have served with different Budget Officers, you know, and and just kind of get some feedback and and have some conversation. And, you know, super curious to hear if you have anything proposed as far as specific changes for the next budget season of how to conduct things differently or the same or, you know, programs that you're proposing. We talked about some programs, looking in the Tyler system and all that. So just kind of trying to have a good conversation around that in a work session format instead of in a county court meeting where it feels like we're kind of in a rush to have those kind of conversations, so.
Obviously, last year being my first budget was very tedious, very time consuming, very, the process itself, I felt was a little cumbersome. You know, I have talked with some other counties since then on their processes. And the biggest thing I see that the difference is, is the Budget Officer and other counties are having all the, which which we do, which but we're duplicating in some respects here with our process.
Right.
Is that the Budget Officer has those conversations with the department heads. And whatever's negotiated and agreed upon or decided upon at that time and then put into the proposed budget. That's what's given to the Budget Committee for consideration. There is no secondary appearances by the department heads in most counties. It's unless there might say we get the budget, the proposed budget out a week or so before we have our first budget meeting, which we can do. There's no, there's no secrecy to it that it can't be made public. Yeah, it can't be made public until the first budget meeting or anything like that. So we can put that out ahead of time for everybody to review. And then if there's anything that stands out to Budget Committee members on that first meeting, we could talk about and say, okay, we'd like to call in X Department or Y Department and find out why they're either projecting a lot more expenditure or whatever, whatever the case may be. So I think that would, if if doing it that way, we could probably streamline our actual bud- actual Budget Committee portion of the process to two meetings, you know, two, four, I think we're normally, we're doing four-hour meetings, about three or four of them. So we could probably streamline that to two, four-hour meetings and and have a projected third meeting because we can't adjourn. In the budget process, you can't adjourn between those meetings. You just have to recess and come back in or else you have to re-advertise again. So so we could have that a third meeting as a, as an if needed type of a thing. And then and then project a final meeting where we would adopt and maybe give us some time in between that that in case something comes up. When you, I I noticed this year that looking at the budget from February and then, and it took us pretty much until June to finalize. But there were some things that happened in between there that we had to, we had to change.
Make adjustments.
Make adjustments for. So I I don't want to sign it out and be done with it by May because there's, there's a whole month, month and a half of things that could change. I'd still like to maybe push it towards about the middle of June for adoption. That gives us time for those things to come in, but we're also not pushing it right up against the limit either, is my ideas on that. The software, the Tyler software, I think is a really good thing to move towards. It's going to be about eleven thousand dollars more than what we currently pay for the current version, annual fee of Tyler. So we hadn't budgeted for it this year to implement it this year. Something that's good to talk about now and decide whether we want to go that way. The way we're doing it right now is pretty, it's labor intensive because you hand a worksheet to a department head, they fill it in and pencil and give it back to the Budget Officer, and then the Budget Officer has to go in and type all that in. In this, in this cloud-based version where we can have multiple accounts, they don't cost, they don't charge per account. Right now, the system we have, I think we have three, three accounts, four accounts.
Four users.
Four users, something like that, and it costs to add more users. If we had this cloud-based version, department heads would be able to go in and type in their proposed amounts, budget amounts, and it would be done, and you'd type it once and it'd be done. Now, now.
And they'd all, they'd also be able to see real time when they type that in, what that makes their budget look like. Because right now, like they hand it to you and it doesn't really show them real time what all those calculations come out to be unless they go in and and calculate it all on a separate process.
And I think it happens almost every year inadvertently, a zero gets left off or something.
Working on that.
And the more time, the more, the more interaction, the more times people handle this this stuff, there's the possibility for that. Whereas if it's typed in once the first time, we actually have more opportunities to catch it before it goes through to an adopted budget.
Well, and if they saw it in real time, they'd probably almost like can catch it immediately versus, you know, how we currently.
So so those are some justifications, and I think it would even streamline our budget process even more to to shorten, but also be more accurate in in finalizing and completing the overall adopted budget, but it's eleven thousand dollars.
So is there any other features that come with the eleven thousand dollars that would be utilized by the county other than that one specific thing? Or is that kind of like?
Well, it would allow.
Thing for that.
It would allow department heads to regularly monitor their own budgets without.
Without you having to send.
Yeah, so so it gives them more control, well, more monitoring of their budgets throughout the year. So so there is, budget-wise, I think there's, there's, there's multiple benefits to to having that functionality. It's just the cost.
So when I visited with Deanna and it was about executive time, she said that there was a different version of that. And that's where my understanding of Tyler and executive time, while that gets a little comluded, is is what executive time does with just keeping track of our our payroll and that and the version that we could upgrade to. And then this other piece, are they all separate functions that we have to pay for individually?
They're, they're separate mo- modules or whatever, like we have. I'm not real versed in all that, but we have like the budgeting module and then we have a couple other modules that do other, serve other departments or other functions. I'm not, I I deal with the budget when I don't deal with the other side of it, but there is an HR module that that HR uses. There's the time, the executive time module, which I believe they ended up actually having to create that for us because they didn't have that capability when we first went to Tyler. So they created that executive time model or module for us, if I remember right.
There's a lot of hiccups, but it finally was relaxed. Yeah, there was a lot to get back to.
So I'd like to see, and I, you know, worked with it last year. All the data is in this, is in Tyler for our budget. And we had some, some issues last year with printing the LB1, which is the final form.
Nightmare.
Oh, my gosh.
Trying to get that to function.
Yeah, and we ended up having to do it by hand, manual of taking certain reports and the bottom lines of those and adding them together and and doing a lot of manual work on it. I I hope this year that, I mean, we can get with Tyler earlier. And and there's other, the thing that gets me is there's other people in Oregon that use Tyler for their budgeting. And I know they have to produce LB1s and LB2s, so why? And I realize we're all separate accounts, but somewhere they've got to have the programming for that already done.
You're right. What I have been told is that when they implemented with Tyler, that Tyler requested from the county at the time, like how to build those reports. And so you're dealing with, I mean, individuals who it's brand new, a system, and they don't know where to tell Tyler where to pull that information for that. And I, I mean, I feel like that kind of a mask is a hard thing if you're not familiar with those systems. A whole like, oh, they need to pull from this line, this line to help create the LB1. And so, and that's still what we're told continually, like, well, build your report, but you have to tell us how to do it.
But like you say, other places do it and they don't have something within their own system, then that seems odd.
But but a thought could be like a county, if you have a contact to be in calling Tyler saying, okay, like X county has this LB1 form so that they can compare apples to apples, maybe.
Yeah, I know one thing they did tell us is not everybody's budget, the 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 actual physical structure of it is different. Like our lines, our 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 journal lines numbering and whatnot is different.
Unique to each county.
Yeah, where where ours, and I'm just pulling, I don't remember the, I have them all memorized, but like a three thousand number means
Federal.
An expense or something, right?
Well, like, like.
Like when you get to zero, two, five, thirty-two, fifty.
Yeah, so like if it's a revenue, if it starts with a three, it's, it's federal money. If it's a two, it's like fees that come in, it's, yeah, all the numbers have, I mean.
And but I mean, and fives are expenditures, right? Personnel and materials and supplies, but then that last four digits.
That's what I was getting at is the last four digits, like the first two numbers of the last four digits identify the revenue source or the expenditure category.
Yeah, so that might not be constant from county to county. That might be the structure that they picked and how they set it up here in Harney County, but it might not be consistent. So that's, that's the only thing I can figure that would cause a glitch in not being able.
If they didn't pull all those over or something, like when they create this, we'd have to have some time to make sure that they didn't miss pulling something into, okay.
So those are, those are some things that I'd like to look at, and I think it should be a living process every year. You know, I I hate to get locked into a specific process every year where we're not finding efficiencies and doing it better from year to year.
Well, and I think you also discovered as you took some training and that things that I remember you telling us during the budget process that weren't known to us of just budget process, budget law, things that you brought up that we were like, oh, well, that was good to know that we didn't maybe understand prior. And so I think that as you learn more that way too and and participating in those trainings, you're going to bring more back to the table that we may need to tweak.
We were hoping to try and get them here live for Eastern Oregon this year and maybe draw people from Mount here and Grant and Lake and everybody. Yeah, and and, well, and schools, it's the same training for schools and cities and everybody. So so we could potentially house or host a pretty good group of people.
You know, one thing I'd like to think about is the way our budget is actually how it exists when you print it. I mean, it's, we're all used to it, you know, on the Budget Committee and all that. But when you look at other budgets, and I remember at County College when I went, they had a treasurer and another financial person talking about those things, and they had examples. And their examples were more like our audit printed out book, you know, it more like balance sheets, more like stuff like that. But you could look and say, oh, Harney County's total budget is fifty million, blah, blah, blah. And these are the main categories. I know we have a form that we print out for that, but I mean, it was all there. So a a person could go, could look at it as this is the county budget, and then here's this stuff. It was easier to see what your budget was and 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 how it meant. And and they even had some of those pie charts and stuff and all that. And I mean, it's just so different than, and I remember when I first would come to county court meetings and stuff, you know, my early years in Harney County, and I sometimes sat in on budget meetings. I mean, they have the old kind of printer printed off, you know, and the old, you know, tear-off little side pages. We, we do it differently, and I know change is hard, but it, a person who wants to know what the budget is and really look at it just as a member of the public, you know.
Kind of that higher, higher.
That, but there should be a published, I mean, to me, that's what most, most organizations.
The reports that ours produces do look rough. They're, they look like a dot matrix printer type of a report. I I agree.
But but even just, you know, I always have to keep that, whatever that form is that has our our major funds. But they are just, so I can keep my mind wrapped around what is our budget, our our budget. And I know we get involved in all this, the administration things. But when we move forward, hopefully with some strategic planning and some financial strategic planning to help us in the years to come to face our challenges, you know, we all need to know the big picture too.
Well, and what you're describing is more like what I see as a school board member. Budget that I see and prove as a school board member is more like what you're describing, and it has your pie charts. It has, you know, and and Oster's does all that for us. They provide that service for the city or the church goal, but that's more what they're producing for us. And so I think there's easy, you know, local budgets to look at that would be a good comparison of, you know, especially in that higher level view, to try to produce something more like that, that that helps capture it without as much of, like you say, the the smaller details and have it more in one spot.
I mean, we have to have down to the general fund, you know, down toward the end of the general fund, and we have to look at that page, which I always have to get my mind right to make sure I'm reading it right. We should have it really easy at the beginning of the budget document, whatever it is. And and this is not new. I mean, I remember I was a treasurer of, you know, some national association that had to do with military stuff years ago. And we did that, I mean, this has been standard way of portraying budgets for a long time. And when I was doing some research on elected official compensation input of certain counties some years back, I went to their budgets and many, many, many counties in Oregon don't do it like we do it.
No, so that's a good question. Doesn't Tyler have some kind of, it's like what we have now, but it is more like the worksheets. You know, the way it's produced is more like a worksheet. Don't they have like a top recap that it'd be more like which?
Like a summary page?
A summary page that that would produce all the information from the worksheets. I'm calling it a worksheet, but I don't know what else to call it. It wouldn't be the point that I'm asking about. And the, I mean, the LB1 is kind of that, where it breaks down in categories and, but it's not working probably.
There's two ways to do a budget if I'm, if I remember right from the budget training. You you can have a category, you know, where it, where it, like the way we do it, which has your, your telephone and your fuel and whatever else, all those different line items. Or you can quote, you can combine all that into just a, into a heading, can't you?
Yes, what we talked about. Like the general fund, it wouldn't be department-wise, but.
Yeah, but that takes a lot of, that takes, doing it that way, which I I prefer the way we have it really because it has a better breakdown and you can see where.
Yeah, I mean, we need the breakdown too, but in the portrayal of.
Tyler should have some type.
For all the pub.
Yeah, but, yeah, just like she's talking about.
Have what we have now, so it shows all the individual lines, but they have like a recap of the whole.
A summary page that's at the top of each of the buzz or something.
I think they're going to be presenting for us. Look at it.
And we've been changing every animal over time.
I said, I think any kind of, I, I want to ask them a bit of all, we just have to tell them how to do it.
Yeah, the detail is still needed by departments, et cetera, but the, the
Right.
The external budget, if you will, the one that is what we can work from and whatever, and that is easy for the public to digest themselves. Just saying that, you know, their school board, they have the detail, the superintendent has all that detail and they are, they do.
He does share it with monthly, you know, and it's easy to keep track of from what was originally presented and and it shows the different years projection over time, you know, but it's all in a couple pages in my binder and it's easy for me to really track.
And that's, that's what these we've always lacked here.
And it has your pie charts. Yeah, I mean, and it's easy for Budget Committee members to just glance year to year and go, oh, this one's been really changing, you know. And we can all do our own easy analysis.
And it's a multi-million dollar budget. It's like a nine million dollar budget, so it's not like it needs that much different than our budget. This is what I see every month as a multi-million dollar budget, so.
Well, maybe we get some samples from the school district and give it to Tyler and say, can you, can you create us reports that that look like this?
I remember, this is some years back, maybe four or five years back when we were first doing an elected official compensation board for the first time, and I had to do some help to provide information, and I had to go county by county to try to look at like counties. And that's when I really got exposed to their budgets. I went, man, why are we the only ones who don't even have something like that?
Well, and just for an information, most school districts here locally have dropped Tyler and went away from it. And so, you know, I know it would take planning and everything if we were to move to a different system, but we've either got to get Tyler working for us or we've got to find something that does work better for us for the long term.
I I think real quick, like, I I think the version that we're using is, is, is just.
Accurate.
Yeah, and that's why I think exploring the cloud-based versions would be worth. And that, and I went to that train, we went to that training last year, and it, the 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 version ten, was it version ten? The cloud-based version ten have a lot more functionality in it, really didn't, but it's, there's a transition to it. It's going to be, you can get a cloud-based version for nine that we use now. And that's actually what they recommend is going to, going to the nine cloud-based version first so that people get used to using that cloud-based environment before moving to ten, because ten is solely cloud-based. You don't have a.
Be interesting to know why some of the entities such as a school district may have chosen to move away and if whoever they contract with now, if they're very pleased with them or not. Do you know if.
I I can find that out. I I didn't go at a lot of change. Sylvie's never used Tyler, but the Crane School District did, and I know District Three did, and they both went away from that discussion.
Well, our, our audit is, what system do they have that we don't have like a Tyler system? But that's the format that I think that you're talking about, and I would suggest going right to the audit. Who prepares our audit.
The auditor.
The auditor, you see how their format and how that.
And and Symmetry Care, which I sit on their board, the financials presented every month, there are very much more what Oster does, what, you know, you know, you cut your balance sheet, you got this and that. And it's, it's kind of commonly understood formats on your financials and easy to print out and produce as you need them. But I don't know what system they use, and they're a smaller organization, but still.
Just to reiterate what Debbie said, like, it may be a possibility that it's not Tyler that provides that for us, but it's a separate software where we're pulling that data, putting it in, that makes it all need to prove for everybody.
And there are, there are softwares that do that. Like last year, when I very first started, we got hit with by a company called ClearGov. And that's basically what they do is they pull the data, they pull the data from, from Tyler, and then you work with it all in there, it's that, their interface, they're providing an interface. So it pulls all the data, you work with it in their interface, and then it dumps back to Tyler so that it keeps everything up to date. But but you're dealing with there, yeah, I I'm not sure.
Sounds like.
Which which actually their interface was a lot like the cloud-based version interface of of Tyler. And so why have, why pay two separate licensing as in everything?
Well, it'd be interesting to know, yeah, what's your different price point, sorry.
We need to do some research, though. Not that this is the situation with Tyler, or not yet, or maybe not ever, but the the business principle I always remembered the most because they said, and this is a long time ago, but nothing's changed. It's called a sunk cost. Sometimes you have put money into and continue to put money into something because you've already put money into it. You want it to work and you can, at some point, a good business decision is to quit doing that and go with something better. And so I don't, I'm not saying we're at that point with Tyler, but just think about that.
When that point is.
We, it's a judgment call, but many businesses fail to make it and it doesn't end eventually.
So here's, here's kind of how involved, and I had it right here in front of me, but here's kind of how involved we are with with Tyler. So so it's the ERP Pro Financial Module Suite, which I believe is our budgeting.
And that's part of mine for the preseason.
And then, and then there's a module called Core Financials.
Oh, that's me.
And then Fixed Assets, Project, excuse me, Tammy, Project Accounting, which I think HR, I think Deanna uses that mostly with project codes and whatnot to keep, kind of to track expenses and stuff.
Yeah, it's utilized mostly by public health and some other agencies, you know, which.
Human Resources Base Package, Payroll. I don't think we have that one. System Software and that ERP Pro Nine Customer Relationship Management Suite. I'm not sure exactly what that, oh, and in that suite that you have Output Processor Server, Cashier, which we don't have the cashier module because we're doing that other.
We do, it's part of what I do is called Catch Collections and.
As part of Tyler?
I do some.
Oh, I thought you guys were using a different, because weren't you using that other, that other online system for card read and whatnot?
Oh, so we use that separate.
That's what I'm saying, you're using a separate one. And I think this cashier module in this is what that would be. And then.
You're saying we could have some redundancy there.
Yeah, I don't think we have that module though, is what I'm saying.
Oh, it's on your list, but we might not.
Yeah, well, it's in their proposal, it's in there, yeah. And their total bottom line for their proposal was twenty-four thousand and eighty-four dollars. If we don't use those two modules, there's twenty-six hundred, twenty-six fifty roughly, it would come off of that. So so we're looking at about twenty-two thousand dollars. Our current, our current Tyler, current annual maintenance is thirteen thousand, five hundred and eighty, so there's nine thousand dollars difference between what we currently pay and what this new, the the cloud-based would be. Nine to, nine to ten thousand dollars.
Kind of a fixed annual cost.
Yeah.
And so would, would that upgrade, then our annual cost would be twenty-four thousand?
Yep. Yeah, so it's not a one-time fee. It's a, and part of the reason for that too is because of being cloud-based, which would save us some money on our local IT end because we wouldn't have to have servers for that information. It would be cloud-based. So it's a little bit of a trade-off in one, in an IT area, but it is.
But we don't know what that would be.
Well, and most of our, most of our servers, other than this morning, we found out that there's a server that looks like it is. Is in a big need of being replaced. Those servers are still gonna have, we have like four or five servers. I don't know exactly how many, but we have four or five servers for different purposes. And, um, whatever server that's housing all of our Tyler information, we wouldn't need anymore. And they're about five thousand apiece.
You eliminate the hardware costs completely. Perfect. And then you get it offsite, which is a security.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you, you do end up with another layer of security on that, um, like, what is it? Curry County can attest to?
Did they not have it? They needed it?
Curry County lost everything they had.
Because they weren't cloud-based or they were?
They weren't cloud-based and they did not have.
And they got.
They lost literally everything. Financial assessments, tax. Recording images.
Did they not realize they needed it or?
Well, they got attacked. It was a malicious criminal.
The cybersecurity stuff, I know, um.
But when we did our upgrade, did we feel like we nailed that so that we weren't as vulnerable to some things?
I think so. I'm, I mean, in my world now, that's like the language of my life. Is, and I've been assured by, by ASI that we're being really secure. Um, an issue came up this morning with a Huiyon server, web, web servers. Um, that they're working on an upgrade right now, that we found that was. And Bill and I talked about that. For the most part, I think, security-wise, I think they do a really good job.
Yeah, after County College and then I had some class members in County College from Curry County that had the, you know, that were there and could talk about it. Um, I was very concerned about our IT security, cybersecurity, uh, protection and I came, first thing I did was come back and talk with Jeremy. And he and Brad, I've talked to Brad about it as well, and they assure us. We're pretty well protected with the software and the, and the protocols that they have in place. We're pretty well protected. But offsite is offsite. I think, you know, that's another, I, I'm not sure I'm ready to.
Five thousand dollar cost. It would be eliminated if we moved it off.
Well, servers are good for what, three to five years?
Yeah, they try, try to do them about every five years.
Um, so, so it's a cost every three to five years. Now this increase cost for going to Tyler is nine thousand dollars every year. So. Yeah, so, so there's a little bit of savings there. There's a little bit of additional security there, but. But it's gonna cost more.
And that included this other program for budgeting purposes? Or did this quote not include that eleven thousand dollars that you were?
This included the cloud-based upgrade.
For budgeting?
Yeah.
Purposes.
Yeah.
But that does not include Tyler's budgeting module, correct?
No, it does.
It does include.
It includes all those modules that I read off, uh, Core Financials.
Which would give our department heads ability to.
Yep.
Access that directly.
Yeah, the suite, the suite itself is ERP Pro Nine Financial Management Suite. And within that suite, the modules are Core Financials, Fixed Assets, Project Accounting, Human Resources, Payroll. Uh, Distributed Timesheet Entry, which I think, I don't think we have that module. That's why I have it checkmarked. Um, System Software, Non-SQ, whatever, that's some back behind the scenes stuff, um. And then there's another suite, which is ERP Pro Nine Customer Relations Management Suite. And that's the Output Process Processor Server, the Cashier and Forms Overlay. And I think we have a portion of that, but I don't know exactly what portion of it is.
Judge, with the, with the timesheet one, replace executive time one?
Well, that's what I was like, I, I had one, but then we asked them to make a different one or did they?
Well, this came out afterwards. Yeah.
So I was, I was just wanting to back in places.
I, I don't know. I'd have to, it's, it's, it's a little tough dealing with them there because they're, they're back east in Texas and whatnot. I'd like to go to another training where we had them right after knowing what I know now. I'd like to go to another training here in the state of Oregon where we can go cheap. And have all these questions answered because they're right there in front of you.
I'll have local users with you too.
Yeah, yeah. Well, Treasure Heaney and, uh, Tammy went last time and myself. And we had them all over. There was, there wasn't that many people there and we're the only users of version nine. So they had the instructor all to themselves.
One of the other benefits could be over time is I think with this version. Is you can allow different levels of access, so. Like departments could key in their own payables. Not that you want like everybody doing it at once, but you know, training certain departments to key in. Their own payables, which would take, take a lot, take a lot of workload off.
And then Tammy could just review them?
Yeah, a lot of the work, a lot of the work is done in the work unit. The, in the, the department, the work unit.
So it could eliminate redundancy. It's right now it becomes redundant that our department heads have to go fill this out, take it to Tammy. Then you and Tammy have to deal with it. And so we handle it in three different settings, minimum.
Well, the departments are, they're already preparing it. They're doing it on paper.
Yeah, they're keeping track of it on their side.
They have access to do it all once keyed in, then they know it's been keyed in. Then it's on them. It wasn't their right.
And also they would see their budget in real time when they choose. Spending.
Which has always been a challenge for them because they feel like they, I, from what I've heard from department heads, they feel like. That limits their ability to really know in real time what is going on in their departments because they aren't sure. At what stage their AP is, if, if the numbers they're seeing when you send them monthly included all the. Withdrawals that they did in the last AP or, you know, it.
I, I think there's a lot of benefit to it. It's just the cost.
So do we know when there's future trainings available to?
I haven't looked, but I could, we could probably go on their website.
How good is Tyler's technical support when you need it?
For me, there, I don't have any trouble. At busy times of year, at the end of the fiscal year, what have you, and they have to wait a little bit longer. But they have the option where they'll do a call back. So that's crazy. You can just. Leave the number and we, we, you know, call you back when you're next in queue.
Doesn't work so good with Norton antivirus, I can tell you that.
And it alternates between Texas where they're based and then another major city. When I first came, I think in seventeen or eighteen, um, Judge Reynolds and Deanna and I went. To between, um. And now I wish they would offer that again closer because you could pick, you know, like an HR or a budget or whatever. And go to a one-on-one treaty. You might be in a room of like twenty people or the instructor, but it was. After working with it all these years, it would be more advantageous now that you have more knowledge of it.
So that's one element of our budgeting process, that, 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 you know, the product that it produces. The format, you know, that it produces it in. Um, and the interaction with it, the, the interface with the, with the software. The avenue or the advantages of departments being able to monitor more in real time. And like I said, we can have as many cloud accounts as we want. Um, protection wise and, and kind of like Treasure Heaney was speaking to, you can lock down users to just their department. You can lock down people to view only, so they can't enter anything and mess any, you know, mess with any numbers. But you can, you can give permissions to a specific person within a department that has the edit.
Ability.
Ability to edit and enter data. Um, so there's, there's, I like those features, uh, because when you, when you open it up to give fifty people access to it, you want to make sure that people aren't, aren't.
Well, and you want to meter. Meter that out at first, that you bring in maybe four departments, train them how to do it. Get those four doing it well. And then, you know, you could integrate it over time. To all the departments potentially, but you wouldn't have to, just like you say, open the floodgate right up, right up. And then not have everybody trained to know what they're doing or looking for.
The best time to migrate to it would be in July, after budget. It's been budgeted for. We coordinate with Tyler, get them to come and install it, give some training classes, whatever comes along with that.
So there would be training that would come with doing this, where they'd come to us.
I think there was, and it might even, some of it might be virtual.
In their proposals, does it say what?
I don't know. I'll have to look at it in depth. But it seems like, I want to say it seems like from the training that we went to last year. That they mentioned that they, onsite training, that there's a, in the beginning, in the very beginning, that there's an onsite training element to it.
And not to jump to another topic, but, uh, you know, should we budget for and hire an administrator? You know, they'd be very involved in that right from the start.
Well, and also have access to, to monitor and keep track of that.
Yeah.
That new system could, or that bridge could very well have the lead the expert that you're referring to as well, too. I mean.
Yeah, maybe.
New modern building muscles that provide you.
Yeah.
I mean, those are the things that come with an upgrade. I mean, that's what you get. Tools that can present it in a way that is more professional and better than.
Would they want to give a presentation to the budget board via Zoom or something where they can?
I could definitely.
They could show us what, what we're talking about. They could show what, what theirs can do and, and answer some of these questions.
Are you suggest, or by suggesting that it would go in until next budget process?
We won't have, we, if we bought it right now, we wouldn't have time to train people up on it and. And I didn't budget for it for this year either, so we wouldn't have time to implement and get, it, it would. We'd have, end up probably potentially having more errors than anything.
It would take at least a year to.
But like you say, if you started in July with the plan of getting implementation ready, that would give us from July to the budget season. Starting to get our ducks in a row and.
So this proposal doesn't break it down, but it does say professional services. We will provide you the various implemented related services. Itemized in the inventory summary.
I know this is not new technology. I used it in a previous job, but, you know, they can share the screen with you from wherever they are. When you're learning it and help guide you if, you know, if the initial training wasn't enough.
Yeah, if they can pump right on your.
Yeah, they could say, okay, what, what you're looking at.
I can't imagine we would be happy to do. Presentation, what these, what the approvals will be.
Change is hard, but I'd like to see some change.
No, we've got to look for whether this is the magic bullet for our problems. Is the upgrade versus transitioning to a whole other system over time, you know, like the, we obviously aren't comfortable. With what we're currently being provided with, what we're paying, but obviously they want us to pay a lot more to get what we want. And so it'd be, you know, if we aren't planning on putting this into the current budget. And it'll be the next year's budget, that would give us a little more time to even do some homework on some other platforms to see if there's anything out there that. Have any better usability, you know, because you said that some counties use Tyler, but some weren't.
Yeah, it's not a statewide, it's not a statewide, everybody uses, I think there's quite a few, but. Go ahead, did you?
Well, I just, this is great conversation and, but one thing is like in order to like facilitate and do this. It's gonna take like a team and time and all that. And so I, that's just something I want to say upfront to you, like. I don't expect that Judge Hart. Does all this on his own. That's why I like a strategic plan would come in place so that we perform a team who works towards this goal. And we can provide for.
Right.
That, then on that, what you're saying is that. I know that I'd be happy to help that team. I know Terry would be happy to help. That if you reached out to other individuals to help in that team for preparing it. I just hope that if you ever change systems, that you have an audit of that done. Done as you're doing it so that not just one person is saying, these are the correct figures. Because that's what happens and. Of the shortfall is that that's during that time, that was. An issue of what was actually input versus what actual numbers were, you know?
Right, the system was not.
And that was because, correct, my understanding, the administration at the time was told, you need to tell us how to build this record.
That's right.
So did. So what I'm saying is don't, please, please, please have an out. Correct to, to check all of those numbers before it goes live.
Was there a, what, what kind of data system was used before Tyler?
Tyler was implemented when I came here, so I knew.
It was an AS four hundred, uh, I'd be an AS four hundred system. Just, it was accurate and worked well, but it was the same system. So Aubrey computer system, which is Brad Brown's predecessor. Uh, managed the system and it was just an AS four hundred green screen is what we used. It was a powerful, good system, but it antiquated. But it entailed not only the financials, it entailed document recording and then a whole tax assistance system. They were all tied together on one system.
So when they, when they moved, when they integrated or migrated to, uh, Tyler. Did they take the data directly out of that and upload it into Tyler?
Yeah, there was an export. And then they did a migration.
So it wasn't all done by hand?
No, it was migration. Uh, Brad was involved with that and, and Tyler, uh, Living Heard was, was involved in the migration. Basically was the Navy. But that, that, uh, migration was in two thousand and ten, I believe, nine or ten.
But I heard that, I, I recall the budget. Issue began in two thousand thirteen.
That's when I became aware.
And then for five years in a row, the wrong beginning fund balance was used for budgeting.
Yeah, and the original figure wasn't correct. They're pulling and then it didn't pull like it should have, and that's.
And that comes back to what Bobby Joe was saying. They were asking people that weren't familiar with the system to create a system. And therefore it leads to error when you.
Right.
Do that.
I guess, you know, I'd like to think that these, these professional companies that, that do this for their, that's what they do. That we wouldn't have to create too many standalone reports. Where we create it, what, you know, and try to create it for them to just make it. I, I would love their system to be, um, comprehensive enough that we can pull what we need without that human error. Factor.
Now, now nine has a cloud-based version, which is what we have is nine, the version nine. Treasure Heaney and, and Tammy sat in on, on the, on the nine-based stuff because that's what we're currently using and they had direct access to ask their questions. I sat in on the, on the Pro Ten version. The Pro Ten version is. There's so much more capability and, 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 um. Um, being able to produce reports. Yeah, I mean, so eventually, you know, we would. Migrate to ten, which there shouldn't be a much, much of a migration there. The data should really all be pretty much the same. It should just be. You know, new, new functionality to it. Um, a lot, I mean, there was, there was tons of stuff they could do, that, that. That presentation was overwhelming in its capability, really. Um, but just, just so everybody knows, there is a, there is a upgrade to nine, but they do have the cloud base. And that's what they, they suggested that, that we go to the nine cloud first, because then when, if we did go to ten, people would already be used to. Because then when, if we did go to ten, people would already be used to using the cloud-based version that.
Well, and you gotta remember, this is our software, this is a fifteen-year-old program.
Right.
I mean, and needs because it was developed before we got it.
Yeah, no, and that's what's good to understand.
You're dealing with old technology and that's why they're urging us. But pretty soon they're not going to support it. They're gonna say, sorry, you guys, only one left, you gotta go.
They, they, well, inevitably, I think, yeah, down the road somewhere, they're gonna, they're gonna draw a line. But for the time being, they've said that they're not going to close off support for, for Pro Nine that we have, but. Is that feasibility, it depends on how many people out there are still using nine and how cost, cost prohibited or. You know, if they're incurring costs because we're the only, the only entity that's still using this version of nine, they're definitely going to cut it off, yeah.
So you're saying that they told you, Judge, that they recommend first, if we're on nine, first do the cloud-based. And then after that, you could consider upgrading to ten cloud-based.
Yes.
What other entities, what other counties, does everybody use Tyler or is the other stuff out there? There's nothing that makes all counties use, I mean, it's a county choice.
He said that there's a variety.
But, but that's, but that's another thing, too. I mean, we can look around and see what else is out there. What other options for software is out there?
Before we jump to ten potentially.
Well, before we even jump to nine cloud-based, we could do that, but, but in asking the migration questions, a new company. Is going to have to build, it, it'll be additional cost to, to migrate from Tyler to Smith. Is going to be another cost in and of itself because they have to, they have to write the software to, to. Import all that information to the right places where it needs to go. So, but you know, if it's something that maybe what's the overall every year fee for it, is it less? Is the functionality of it still better? There, there's a lot of variables and that's almost where a team that would look at it and goes, go talk to them and look at a presentation. It's a lot like what the sheriff's office is doing or dispatch is doing right now for their CAD mod uh, uh, program for their computerated dispatch module. And they've looked at several different presentations from a couple of different companies and what the functionality of it is and everything. So we would want to do the same thing if we're going to explore. A, a software all, altogether.
Definitely review proposals from.
We have input from the users we have now. Everybody that's utilizing now, they have um. And information about what that would look like and what would affect them and make these, ask those questions.
Cause right now you said that there's four people that have access to use.
Because it costs, right now, the versions are on, it costs per user. Yeah.
Do we know uh, what the potential cost of the ten version is just for, you know, projecting out future budgeting? Did they give you?
I don't know, versus, I, I, I'll have to get back to you on that one.
Okay, I'm curious if they give any of that.
Yeah, I don't have it, I don't have it off the top of my head, so I'll have to.
Yeah, because if we're looking at a potential change, like you say, right now, just to get to the cloud-based version of nine, it's a nine thousand dollar difference. But we're potentially saving staff time and helping improve our budget process, but not to the level that we may be able to get to it. And, you know, it's just trying to figure out where we.
And then just how complicated a program doing it versus what else is out there. Yeah, I totally. It's hard to find out without you, but I bet there's some good stuff out there, too, that we need to at least, at least to learn about.
Tyler, Tyler is a, an international company. They, they service cus- customers internationally. They did, they did mention that in the training, so. They've got a pretty big swath of the market share for, for their uh, product. I'll have to get back to you on what the cost of ten would be versus.
Did you say that um, Deanna has access to a listserv for administrators or that you do? That where you could just pose that question to Oregon counties administrators?
Well, I have a, I have a group email address for county administrators and, and um. Deanna has a group email list for HR.
So at least on the administrator side.
You probably.
Yeah, maybe just query some of your, the other county, you know, on, on your listserv, just say, what, what type of accounting software do you use for budgeting and financial management? Just to.
I wish we had a true listserv because then potentially you'd search your listserv first for that question and not even have to send an email out, but you. People are real resistant to use listservs for some reason.
Oh, okay.
I wish the administrators had it. But anyway, I'll, I'll have to get back on the, on the cost of not uh, ten versus nine.
So we kind of, you know, went over a lot of trying to plan for the future with this, which I think is super healthy. What can we help uh, with planning for this current budgeting process? And on this is where I, I really think it's kind of Bill and Bobby Joe, just bringing us up to speed on. Are there things we can help with? Are there things you need more support with? Uh, you know, how can we streamline this? Like you say, trying not to turn it into a more arduous process than it needs to be as you've looked at what we've done versus what we could do. You know, I, I think it'd be good to spend some time just trying to get to what we want to do for this upcoming.
I, 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 I think having the dual presentations is cumbersome, takes up a lot of time. I like the idea of preparing a proposed budget and that's it. That's what, I mean, not saying you can't make changes, but, but, but that's it, right? But. But putting all of that decision-making, because basically all that decision-making for that proposed budget is then on the budget officer's shoulders. If there was a way to have maybe a pre-budget review that, I, I don't know, you know, I mean, the. The department heads can come in and present their budget, but, and there's some tough decisions to be made there. I had to make some tough decisions last year. And if that's the way we want to continue, I'll, I'll do that, but.
Well, and.
But I think there should be some more interaction somewhere.
Interaction because the things that I mentioned in our quarterly budget review, if that's agreed on, you know, generally, that. We would like to see next year's budget include funding for a financial analysis that will tell us as our revenues are projected. Where we need to be on payroll and other things and a strategic planning, have funding for the general strategic planning for the county. An administrator position, if that's where we go, and some professional threat writing services. Not hire a grant writer, but have the money to get whatever we need for the big things. If those are priorities of people, I'll say, okay, and then the budget option is, I'm going to have to try to find places in the budget where we can do that. And some things are going to have to give, what is your general thought? What are your thoughts on that? It's not going to be easy. And if there's no way to afford all those in one year, what must we do this year? And I mean, we've got to start. We can't keep waiting. And I don't know the answer. I don't, but we together have to find a way.
So do we entertain the first part of the process? Kind of, kind of status quo, budget officer, whoever that is, me, whoever. Entertains those conversations and those negotiations with department heads and then brings that to the county court to a work session? For review to say, okay, yeah, we, we'll go with this. You know what, I mean, but like I said, otherwise it's the decisions that are all on one person when you do it that way.
Well, and as, as you went through that with department heads, was there kind of like board departments where you felt like you would like some further discussion? In what they were proposing and changes to their budget? Like what, how did that kind of look like as you did those interactions? Cause was most of them, I mean, I don't, I don't know that there's tons of variants. There's always little. Yeah, you know, variants of trying to make sure that they have enough staffing, sometimes having to shuffle their staffing differently depending on.
For the most part, for the most part, the presentations and everything were pretty much within, within standard norms. There were a couple of departments, I mean, you know, everybody wants to take care of their people and give step increases and everything, which, which is another thing altogether. But still, again, I'd like to come up with a policy where we identify when step increases happen in, in a career. At, at what points, you know, so, so we can budget for that easier, number one. So there were a couple of departments that, that there were some disagreements in and maybe instead of. I, in the departments where we didn't have a disagreement, maybe we only come back together and review those ones where there was some additional decision to be made. Before the finalization of the proposed budget.
Cause if we didn't have to have every department come and present and there was only specific ones where you felt like you wanted some more dialogue with a larger party. You know, that time-wise would be, you know, we have, we have the CAFO ones that have to come in.
Right.
Do that, or do they have to, or is that dependent on approved status that we have to meet a deadline by, you know?
So that's a good example. So there's, you have a handful of departments that are part of the CAFO that. Those, our budgets are all pretty cut and dry, really. And if you look at the big scheme of things and the general fund, I mean, they're not big, none of them. I mean, we're general fund departments that statutorily have to be done. So you don't have a lot of leeway, right? Some things we just have to do. There, I mean, if you look in the big scheme of things, okay, a travel budget needs to go up a thousand dollars or office supply needs to go down five hundred. I mean, we're not allowed about big money in these new departments.
Wow.
Those can be done easily outside of having to come in here and spend a day. Um, you've got departments, the law enforcement that has three or four different funds that we need to deal with. That's one that's going to take you a little more time, they're more complex. It seems to me that some of those you could do even outside of here and save a lot of the draw, but some.
So as one of those, as one of those departments that presents for CAFO. Do you see a need, I mean, like you said, your stuff is pretty cut and dry. We just have to approve it as a budget committee. We have to approve those budgets before the rest of them, right? Right, so would you, would you? Would you see a reason that you would have to come back to the actual budget committee to present or once the proposed budget is done, we just vote on that one right off the bat?
That's how I would, I mean, I, I would think if there's questions of us. Sure, there's the question, but I think the final numbers are, once they're set by the budget committee, it can't change. Because that's what's got to go on the grant. If it changes, then we're in trouble because that's not what was, so. But I, I, like I said, I think between the four of us that are in that fund. You know, you guys at, at that time generally have decided what you're going to do for, for cost of living and decided generally across the board, that's what's going to happen. So you set those numbers in, that takes a lot of it off the plate for everybody else, too. You say, okay, early on, this is the decision we've made based on X. So, you know, there shouldn't be a lot more discussion. You've already probably determined if you're going to put a new position someplace. Those things need to be done now versus in June.
Yeah.
That solves you a lot of trouble, too, because then in June, you're not saying, oh, God, where are we going to come up with a hundred thousand for that? So then you're going back to our departments to try to, and, and then we can't do that. So, so much of that stuff should be done ahead of time, that they don't have these surprises come up in June when you're trying to about what happened. As the last few years, sure, we've been in June finalizing things and, and I hate to say skip to that point again.
Well, I, I, I think the biggest goal is to have ninety percent of the work done, what's, or it ever goes to budget committee.
And that, and ideally, that's what, that's what it should be. You, the budget officer would present a, a, a proposed budget that's balanced. It shouldn't have to be completely combed or redone.
When, when, when the budget crisis happened, it was so challenging and. The budget committee ended up being very active in making suggestions, even unpopular suggestions. The, in fact, county judge at the time was very quiet through all this and everybody else is the bad guy. It was hard. It was very hard and I did appreciate that the budget committee stepped up to, to work that and um. But we have to find a way to, yeah, it would be great. I mean, we're not in a budget crisis as far as we know at the moment. We, we have some challenges that are, would be hitting us in the years to come, but we're okay at the moment. But we have some other new things we want to budget for and where are we going to find shifted around? And if the budget officer, if you're, if you are it and you are looking for some help with that. At the high level, is that what you're saying? That, that.
No, no, I, I think.
Well, you talked about a work session. Is that what you're, with only specific?
Out of ten departments, we have three that have some very big asks or, or, you know, whatever. And, and I as a budget can negotiate that and say, no, we can't afford it, boom, 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 this is what I'm going to propose and that's it. Or we can have another layer of review, another layer of discussion. That we bring just those two or three departments that have some big asks and we decide as a government.
I'm sure we'll be, we'll be happy to be part of hearing those few that, that might need to be heard so that it's not all on one person to. Trying to, try to hear them and figure it out.
And I think what you're describing though, with, with the budget crisis that did occur, the budget process became almost surgical for a period of time.
It was.
Now that, now that we are in a better spot and we're trying to figure out what are our long-term problems moving forward as we have different. Draws on the pots of money that are available, you know, like getting some of that information is going to be so key in order for us to budget properly into the future. And I don't, I know we don't have.
That, that's what a financial analysis.
That's really hard not to have.
Can give us some guidance.
Well, and, and I like.
In the future.
I do like those ideas and I like the, you know, to add to that, what is our goal going to be in the budget? You know, especially general fund, what are we, thank you. What, what are we?
Yes, please.
What, especially if we're looking at our reserve, what's our goal? To put away how much?
Right, all those things. What are the goals, long lines? How we cover the HR, the personnel? And, yeah, our reserve, our contingency, our, some of the projects that, that are priority and how do we make it happen?
I mean, we could almost work backwards. If we decided we wanted to put, just, just a ballpark number. We decided we want to put two hundred thousand dollars in the reserve every year at a minimum. Then you put that number in first and work backwards to make sure everything else.
Yeah, exactly.
They're kind of a way to think, like, I'm not familiar enough with how you input it all. Is there a way to?
Can you input those things and hit recalculate?
You can, you can, you can put it in first and then put in all the other asks and see what the bottom number comes out. If the bottom number comes out a negative, it's like, okay, we still want to maintain the two hundred thousand. That means we got to find money up here to.
And you know what amount you're trying to negotiate.
Since, since we don't have strategic plan, first strategic plan. The one thing that I caution is that, you know, a, a lot of the departments, I think in the past have just assumed. That I'm just going to have my budget increased by this much, cost of living, and then all the things are just going to keep going. And I'm going to use the library as, as example. At three hundred thousand dollars, when I tell that to people that that's what the county is putting into, they say, what? So those are the areas that I think that we still need to remind people. It's just not going to continue to grow and to grow and to grow. We have to be, we have to plan. For really what is going to be able to be us held, what is the county going to be able to afford?
What can we afford and sustain and, and, and be aware of that?
And so that's, that's my point and, and I just, I think that having the department heads come to you and talk about it. But I think they need to know that it's not a blank check out there. I, I get the feeling sometimes from the past that so many of the, not all the department heads, but there's a few department heads that just think. Oh, we'll just ask for more money. We'll just get more money. And until we see revenue generated, how do we just keep getting more money? And I also think that it would be advantageous, you know, it's a fun topic, but like. Just some budget, simple budget education because I, I think, you know, a lot of times they're only looking at their budget. They don't see the big picture like the left half of scene. And so, I agree.
I, and I agree, you know, and that goes all the way back to the two thousand nineteen budget shortfall. I, I talk about it with department heads at department head meetings and I think they're getting tired of hearing that we're still working our way out of it. They've, they've gotten, you know, they hear it every year, they're, it, it's still a fact of the matter. It, it is what it is, but, but. I, I think if they understood a little bit more how we come up with the budget and what, what our goals are and every, maybe. maybe, maybe that helps, I don't know.
Maybe looking at the graphs that the product report showed of trends would help the departments understand the revenue isn't.
Isn't sustaining their, their increase.
Correct, and maybe if they got to, to look at that and understand, here's, here's your money, or lack of money.
And, and I, and I can go pull a copy of it right now. Judge Grassley in two thousand thirteen's budget message said, we are outpacing revenue spending. Decisions are going to have to be made, he put that in his budget message in two thousand thirteen, we are spending more than we're receiving in revenue. Two thousand thirteen, no adjustments were ever made, and then twenty one came through, and it was twice what it should have been, so. That's what they need to understand.
The first line is exactly that, that I wrote for, I said, Hardy County has a financial trend of declining revenues and increasing expenditures begun years ago. Corrective action was not taken yet, has not been taken yet, including the years I've been on, it has not been taken yet.
More ways to determine more revenue, because there's that, too, so. Kind of everything, how do we now generate some more revenue to keep up with the base of required services? We can't, we have to be looking for revenue, too, we can't just say, well, they're inside. And that's. That's what they don't want here, because they don't.
It's hard.
And I wanted them, I'm like, okay, but what are you doing to help this? Because ultimately, that lies on your guys' shoulders to make some policy decisions to figure out what you do. Increase them, and then that's not comfortable either, I mean, it isn't.
And since this is recorded and, and is maybe of education, you guys, well, I think everybody else was at the meeting. The combination of the following developments will further significantly affect us when we're talking about Hardy County's economy and the county revenues in a negative way. The Burns Urban Renewal Agency, that will be hurting us, okay? They have their goals, we will wanna be in dialogue with them to see, because, you know, addressing blight in the city of Burns, if the county's services are all going downhill, is not going to, uh, makes for success. Long-standing stagnant local economy, we have never found that thing that, that will work. The county payroll obligation, that may not be sustainable, I, you know, I haven't had that proven yet, but that's why we would like to have a financial analyst tell us these things, so we're not just trying to guess. That may not be sustainable relative to our revenue outlook, unless our revenue outlook changes, for the better, for the worse. In, increasing cost overall, that's why all capital projects are just, you, you get the funding, and then two years later, it's not enough, you know. We all know that, and again, I'm not sure how this will look exactly, but the, and, and not trying to be doom and gloom, but the anticipation of future negative economic impacts to agriculture due to Hardy County's declining groundwater situation, we have a lot of things, the perfect storm is coming, but we're aware. So let's get some professional help, and let's work together to try to make the best decisions under the circumstances. And then maybe, maybe someone definitely smarter than me will think of some good ways to, to get more revenue, but I always have that on my mind, and I haven't succeeded.
Roxanne, I did a presentation, Ratajale, that.
It, it was great, but none of them panned out.
That's, that, but see, that's a generation of income that she was talking about, but it didn't pan out. But she had a list of things that could help offset some of those costs, and that's unfortunate that it didn't anything come up.
Well, they, they tried, I, I believe they, they did try, but it just ended up for very multiple reasons.
Things that the state did to them, too, ended up precluding them from pursuing some of those that was at one point viable, and then the state came in.
When she was proposing it, were thought to still be viable, and then, like, she said, were no longer allowed.
Which, which is kind of even what I discussed in our work session with the county administrator, and future, you know, role of this body in, in future government, is we've got to be able to in state, engage more with state legislation, because so much of it is doing things like what Roxanne had. You know, if here, we can try this, but then when the state comes down with these bills, and we weren't involved with them, we weren't enough of a voice in the room, you know, we've, we've gotta put ourselves in a position where we can engage with more future state proposed legislation to try to not have as large of county impacts, because they constantly go in and put all these bills in with so many unintended consequences, and we are just not ahead of that in any nature, because we're, you know, it's a difficult thing to ever have enough capacity, but we've got to be more strategic in how we engage in the legislative process to try to help ourselves not be further harmed at the county level, not have further things laid upon us, because I think even our budget gets eaten up by just state mandates constantly that we didn't see coming, and then all of a sudden, boom, in five years, we have another state mandate, and another one that just constantly pulls at us. You know, the community corrections was a big one, you know, that, oh, well, now we're gonna strip all our funding, and now the county will have to pick it up if they wanna keep it solvent.
Which, which they're, right now, in what they're talking about trying to do to amend Measure One Ten, they could go come back with some harsher penalties and some provisions in Measure One Ten, but not bring the money back with it, too.
That's what often happens.
Yeah, and, and, and then we're stuck holding the bag on those new laws and new.
Yeah, be, be careful what you ask for, what you're saying.
That's paramount of how we have to operate, is wrath of mercy everywhere, capital everywhere, I mean, we really are.
All too often.
All too often.
Okay, so, um, I think we've, which, I think we've discussed some good things, discussed some good things on how to proceed for this year. Um, I, I would like to, um, I'd like to visit more, or, or explore more the concept of taking care of everything before budget committee, presenting a proposed budget that might have a little bit of work in it still, but for the most part is done, and, and then proceeding on, you know, I made a phone call, what was it, in May? April, may have been April last year, to Judge Joyce in Malheur County, and I said, yeah, we're working on it, he's like, oh, we're all done. I'm like.
They also have more revenues than we do, they're healthier than we.
But still, they had their budget done in April.
And they're not the only ones.
I, I know it, but.
Yeah.
No, and I, I agree, I think that, um, due to time constraints, anywhere where we can make this flow better, take less of your time, take less of treasure, he needs time, you know, help the budget board have the information they need to make the decisions that they need to make. Um, you know, that just leaves us more available to do all the other things that are on our plates as well.
One thing we are gonna do this year, too, that, that hasn't been done in years past, is, and, and I don't know why, if they just, it, it was a new feature and hasn't been used yet or what, but HR has the capability now for her to go in and do all the payroll stuff, to project all the, all the requested step increases and, and whatever that may look like. The cost of living increase, whatever was proposed, take all that, put it in, and then upload all of the HR information, the payroll information into the budget, so that we don't have to go in and key that, all of that stuff in at once. And, and we were going to set up a, we were gonna set up a trial budget, like a, 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 uh, sample budget or whatever, and transfer, pick some to transfer over, and just see how that process worked. Little QA, do a little QA on it, before we, before we just did it, trusted it, and found a bunch of problems with it. So, so that in and of itself will streamline a lot of key.
Have you already done the QA?
No, we haven't, we're, we're, I was kind of waiting to do anything until after this meeting, before we started to get too involved in anything, because I wanted to make sure what direction we're going in.
Well, that was one of my questions, is when could our cost of living and all that stuff on the payroll side get pulled in, so you aren't waiting on that?
We can do that first, and then actually, the, another thing that I like about doing that, that way, is that when we send the worksheets out to the department heads, it'll already have all the personal services numbers in it.
Yeah, maybe it is, there's, there's no reason that it is.
And so, so that would be the very first step, is doing that. But like I said, I wanna do a little QA, just to make sure that the transfer is gonna work right, and we don't end up with bad numbers and shortfalls and.
And it seemed like some of her numbers last year were kind of almost delayed, and when she received some of the increases and.
She got some really late news on that.
That was the unemployment insurance.
Yes.
And so, you know, it's keeping in mind that those might be some of our, like you say, pickups that we, you know, if that were coming in April versus when you start this process, that would.
Right now.
Those costs are the ones that come late.
Yeah, she said she.
Don't go into it knowing they're gonna be higher.
Well, that's, yeah, like, kind of project high if anything, if we had to, and then ratchet it back to what it actually is.
So she said.
Or, or leave it projected high.
Yeah.
Or, or leave it projected high.
Yeah, I like that idea.
Because it doesn't have to be spent.
True, true.
That's a savings account in your payroll line, yeah, I mean, that's where you're cashing it with them, because those items can't be spent, they're, it's just in there. And if it's budget heavy, great, that's going to next year, it's not being touched, so.
But if we get something from the state that comes in and jacks it up another five percent.
So example, this past year, well, the previous year, it was point six percent for unemployment insurance. We didn't get the, and we figured it for this way, because we didn't get any things, so then after the fact, we got a one point two percent, it doubled. And that's, that's, it, it varies from entity to entity, because it depends on how much unemployment you've had to pay out. It's like an insurance policy, if you, if you make claims against your homeowner's insurance, and then your premium goes up, that's what happens there. That number could come down a little bit for the remainder of this year, we don't know yet, but she's already seeing numbers projecting, predicting that our amount is gonna go back down to point six again next year. And I'm, I'm agreeing, so I think I'm gonna budget, if that's what it continues to look like, I'm gonna budget for point eight. You know, yeah, point eight, point nine, something, just to have that buffer.
And, well, and, you know, that's one of those things, how often can it get up to one point two? You know, like, can they hit us next year at the one point? You know, like, that's, those things, I don't understand how, you know, how much flip-flop you're gonna get with those kind of numbers.
Well, being first year, I don't know the trend, but it does sound like it's a little flut, it's in a little bit of a flux throughout the year, depending on what, what, they must reevaluate it throughout the year and determine what our rates are gonna be.
Well, and it's turnover, too, when you have a constant turnover, when you add a massive turnover, that does it, I mean, that's people going out the door that are going unemployment, which is gonna make their rate go up. And the way it's lower than that turnover than that number goes down, too, so it all goes together.
So, um, we'll work on that, get that part of it done. I'll entertain just the normal process of, of negotiation with department head. Well, I guess first we need to decide, am I gonna be the budget officer again?
Yeah, that's my assumption, as long as you're still willing, you know, like, I didn't want to just. Put it on without this discussion.
We can't do it in a work session, but I will have this of it, this recorded after the next recorded agenda. Um, so then I will entertain and set up meetings with department heads and do that part of it like we normally had. Identify any departments or issues that need further review, and we can maybe get together as a work session and have that review as a body, and, um, and then have a proposed budget that goes to the budget committee, that is pretty much whole and and everything, does that sound like a motion forward this year?
Yeah, it's like, let's do that.
And I will do some more research, because we'll obviously have to budget for it, but I will do some more research on, on Tyler. If, you know, if you have contacts, I will get Deanna, and maybe you can send out an email to your group and see what people are using, and what the costs of them are, if they have that number available, and, and give us something to kind of look at budgeting in that line for next year. Anything else?
Wow, is there anything else from you folks?
All right, so then I guess, there is nothing else, this work session shall be adjourned at eleven thirty-three AM.
Yeah, I made some copies, they just, Bill had sent it to me when I was.
Yeah, I've already got a copy, because I.
Yeah, and, and it turned out that, like, this one was eight thousand, it wasn't exactly that, and I'm like, it was one less, but still. Nine million less, can we do what's nine million less? We're gonna have no, can we give employees if we do this, we've got to.